I'll call this meeting.
Ms. Hamilton.
If you'd join me for a moment, Father God, we just come to you now. We just thank you and praise you for the recent snowfall, Lord, and we just thank you for this glorious day. We pray that you're with each of these commissioners and that you just guide them and direct them. Lord, we ask that you're with each and every person in this room. We just thank you for their attendance and their attention to this, and we just ask that you bless them and bless their family.
If you'd join me for a moment, Father God, we just come to you now. We just thank you and praise you for the recent snowfall.
So, Father, we do praise you for everything. We thank you for all that you do in our life, and we just thank you for today. We ask that you're with us and that you just guide and direct everything that happens in this room. In your name we pray. Amen.
Ledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
All righty, I'll entertain a motion to approve the. Everyone make. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve.
Second, all those in favor of approving the agenda say aye, aye. All those opposed say no. Approved. Approval of amendments from the January 12th regular meeting.
I believe we approve the minutes.
I'll say, then move to second that we approve the minutes from January 12th. All those in favor say aye, aye. All those opposed, means approved, minutes approved. Approval of accounts payable and payroll. I'll make a motion to accept the accounts payable and payroll from January 1st to January 31st and payroll January 1st to 31st. Second, then move to second, we approve the accounts payable and payroll. All those in favor say aye, aye. All those opposed, good. Moving on to public request.
Somebody has something they'd like.
Then we're going to move on to resolutions, ordinances, and proclamations. A consideration resolution 2022-11, acceptance approval of FY21 annual financial audit. Bobby Cordova and Ms. Hamilton.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. We're not seeing them logged into our meeting, so.
We can move on and come back when.
If we will just keep working through them, then we'll come back as soon as we can pull them in.
Let, uh, let's see, Ms. Reed here. So, we'll move on to item B, consideration of the resolution 2022-12, authorizing the county to submit application to the Department of Finance Administration, local government division, for the local DWI grant. Ms. Reed.
Where's the light? Sorry. Good morning, commissioners, county officials. This is a yearly event that we try to bring before you, the DWI grant application for FY23. Seems like we're just in the middle of FY22 and we're already starting over, but we do have to do all the required paperwork, and this is one of those this morning. There's a couple others to come. The resolution you have before you, it follows all the state statute information that we are supposed to follow. It, you know, talks about this is an established grant and distribution funding option for the county. We don't have to take the funds, but we need to take the funds, and all counties do. The distribution comes to us by a formula of the liquor excise tax. Forty-five percent of it comes back to the county, and every year they give us a guestimation in distribution funds. This coming FY23, it would be $126,285. Normally, we get a little more or a little less, depending on how the liquor excise tax rolls in. It seems like people have continued to be drinkers through COVID, so that hasn't changed a lot. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but it's fortunate for us because we have enough money to fund our program, which we only have two salaried positions, and that distribution fund pretty much takes care of the two salaried positions. Then we ask for grant. We'll probably ask for double of what we'll actually get, which is normal. Most counties do, but with that money, we usually run a little bit of prevention program. We hire an evaluator contractor. That's just some of the funds that we've done in the past, and we'd like to do again. So, I would like to ask that you consider authorizing this resolution.
Mr. Chair? Yes. I move we approve resolution 2022-12. Second, moving to second to accept the resolution 2022-12. DWI grant one. All of them. Oh, this is a resolution. We have to roll call vote. Ms. Dixon, how you vote?
Yes.
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 Four yes votes. Resolution passed.
Thank you.
Ms. Reed, do we have Bobby on now? We'll go back to line A, resolution 22-11, the annual financial audit.
They are having some IT.
Well, let's, let's give them just a second, see if they come back.
This next agenda item, it's pretty quick if you want to.
Okay.
It should be.
We'll go on to the next gentleman, C, resolution 2022-13, amending the Roosevelt County pay stipend for the detention personnel through the COVID pandemic. Ms. Hamilton?
Yes, Ms. Chair, Commissioner. So, what was included in your packet is just modifying that to match what y'all had determined. You wanted to set as the rate at the prior meeting. This was the one that was not on the agenda, so we are just bringing it before you so that we can have it corrected, and everyone's on the same level. I would stand for any questions.
Anybody have anything? I'll make the motion to accept resolution 20-13, Roosevelt County pay stipend for the detention personnel. I have a motion and a second. It'll be a roll call vote. Mr. Groder, how do you vote?
Yes.
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 Four yes votes. Resolution 20-13, 22-13 passes. Now then, Mr. Cordova made it back yet? Uh, Casey is, oh.
Good morning.
We, we're gonna go on then. If you get him, just let me know. Adam D, designating February 2021 as 211 month and. Room, for your record, what was your name?
Good morning. Thank you for having us here this morning. I'm Erin Birch. I'm the executive director of United Way of Eastern New Mexico, and we are just happy to be here to help celebrate 211 month, which is February every year, and I have given you a little bit of information about 211. So, 211, the reason we asked for this proclamation and help in raising awareness is because 211 is a vital service that's free and available, actually all across the country. In our area, United Way of Eastern New Mexico is the call center for 211. And if you're not familiar, 211 is a three-digit dialing phone number, and it's for accessing human services referral. So, when people dial 211 and it rings at our office, we talk to them and find out what's going on in their world where they are needing a little bit of help, and we can direct them to the resources that they can access. So, food pantries, rent and utility help, domestic violence help, you name it. We keep a database of government services, churches, nonprofits, et cetera, and the whole reason for 211 is that we can help our citizens get through the challenges that are facing them faster with less frustration. When folks are in need, they don't know who to call, and so sometimes they just hit a phone book, start calling churches, and when you hear no too many times, you start to just believe there isn't help for you. And then that, you know, just keeps people from actually finding that service that they need. And so, 211 is here to prevent that. This is our 15th year of offering 211 service in our area, and in your little packet, there's a call tracking report, and in the last 15 years, our United Way and our 211 office has answered over 25,000 calls directing people to local services, and you can see a snapshot of what we, the kind of calls we answered in 2021 on that spreadsheet. And the state of New Mexico, every county is covered by a 211 center, and actually nationwide, 98% of Americans are covered by a 211 call center. So, if we can all remember 211 and tell more people about 211, then no matter where they go, they can always access that local resource that they're needing. So, whether they pick up the phone here or in Denver or in, you know, Michigan, wherever, they can find the help that they need. And so, your proclamation and your help in spreading the word about 211 can really change what's possible for families, and so we appreciate your time today. And I stand for any questions. Oh, and I gave you a little booklet about 100% community. This is an initiative of that United Way of Eastern New Mexico. We are working in Curry and Roosevelt Counties, and the concept is that we want 100% of our residents to be able to access the 10 vital services that they need to survive and thrive. And so, this is a strategy, the 100% community strategy is being used in over 10 counties in New Mexico right now that we're working through, and 211, I think, is a vital tool for that because connecting people to their resources starts with making sure they know the resources exist and, you know, get pointed at them with the phone number or whatever access they need. So, anyway, again, I'll stand for questions.
In a proclamation, do we need to have it read out? Do you have?
Uh, well, I sent it. It's on, it's, it's actually right here, but I'll be happy. Oh, okay. Well, now I need glasses, which I didn't bring because I'm in my car. I love you, Jim. Okay. I'm not sure this is going to work. We're gonna try this. Okay. The United Way of Eastern New Mexico 211 program is a free confidential referral and information helpline that connects people of all ages to essential health and human services they need. And whereas 2022 is the 15th year anniversary of the 211 program in Curry and Roosevelt Counties, and whereas United Way of Eastern New Mexico has helped over 25,000 callers the last 15 years who were directed to community resources when they were in need, whereas over 25,000 callers in need were directed to resources such as food pantries, help with rent and utilities, transportation, household goods, and services for domestic violence, rape counseling, and suicide prevention. Whereas 211 is a vital service that increases the likelihood that 100% of families in need will be able to access critical resources, a key strategy of United Way 100% community initiative. Whereas 211 and 100% community initiatives seek to identify and overcome the obstacles that prevent people in need from getting their needs met. Whereas to celebrate this important free service to our community, United Way of Eastern New Mexico is conducting awareness activities throughout February. Now, therefore, you, Chairman of Roosevelt County Commission, and on behalf of Roosevelt County Commission, do by, do hereby proclaim February 2022 as 211 month in the city of Patalas and Roosevelt County, and congratulate United Way of Eastern New Mexico in their work in providing 211 service to our area. For the past 15 years, we encourage residents to utilize 211 to access needed services.
Absolutely.
Always have Casey reading you a hard time. With that, I'll make a motion to accept proclamation to declare February as 211 month. Would that be a roll call vote? Ms. Dixon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Four yes votes.
Thank you.
Do we have Mr. Cordova? Okay. We can always come back. We're gonna move on to business, and do we need to go into Board of Finance meeting? Second, then move to second, we go into Board of Finance. Dixon, how you vote?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. We're now in Board of Finance. Okay.
Good morning, chairmen. Oh, sorry. Good morning. Just wanted to give you a quarterly update of our investments, just because you can kind of see where our interest is coming in at. Unfortunately, it's very low, but that is just sign of times. Luckily, we don't necessarily invest in the stock market, so it doesn't directly affect us. However, when there is threat of war, that has a impact on our investments. And then when the threat is pulled back, your markets rise. So, we don't see a lot of that fluctuation just because of our investments are in mostly CDs, and so we will be having some of those CDs that we did secure back a couple of years ago when we were getting about 3%. We will be seeing those come to maturity, so we'll see the realized interest gain on those within the next six months. Does anybody have any questions of me? Okay, thank you.
Chair would entertain a motion to come out of Board of Finance. Second, just saying we now come out of the Board of Finance. How do you vote?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All right. Guess we don't need to do anymore with that. We're good. Uh, gratification. Oh, are we ready? Let's go back to resolutions out of May for the annual financial audit. There he is.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner. So, with us, we have on screen, as you can see, we have Bobby Cordova and Rafino Rodriguez. They both work on our audit account, and the annual resolution was presented in here, and I believe they will have more information on which to share.
Good morning, everyone. We apologize for the technical difficulties. We had some internet problems here. Ms. Amber, when we click on share screen, it says host disabled participant screen sharing. Is there any way we were able to have access to be able to enable that so we could put up our presentation?
Yes, we're doing it right now.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, if you can try it again, that should work.
All right. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Sounds good. Okay. All right. I'm gonna kind of step back here if I can. So, all right. Again, good morning. My name's Bobby Cordova, and we had some internet problems, so Amber and Commissioners, we apologize for that. We are today here to present the fiscal year end 2021 financial statement auditor Roosevelt County. The period that we examined was from July 2020 through June 2021. My name is Bobby Cordova, Rafino Rodriguez. Amber said we worked on the audit, and, you know, we, it's kind of a full circle now, but the process started back in the summer, so we're gonna just touch on the timeline, look at some financial highlights, go over some communications with the county commission that we've already met with in the exit conference and fulfill those requirements. But just so everyone is here, we go over those really quick, cover the auditor's opinion and reporting. So, today is the official release day, and there's a requirement in the state of New Mexico that the audit be presented in a public, in a public meeting, and we're fulfilling that requirement today. First, want to start off by saying thank you. Thank you for allowing us to serve Roosevelt County and for the hard work during the process. A lot of hard work goes into this, and so thank you for that. So, it started in the, in the summer of 2021, a lot of planning and prep. We send a list of items that we need in there. We kind of break the audit up in phases. The entrance conference was on August 24th. We discussed the scope of the audit, the timing. We asked about any risks and concerns. It's about a three or four-month process of field work in terms of internal controls, evaluation, compliance test work. Once the books are closed, then we officially kind of go into employing our, our audit plan based on the risk assessment and all the work that we did preliminarily. That happened in September and October, the evidence gathering process to actually substantiate the numbers that you assert to the, to the public. We were there for a couple times throughout the, that three-month period, goes up into the wrap phase, drafting financial statements, and ultimately on November 30th, we met the exit conference. The regulatory due date is December 1st for counties in the state of New Mexico, and the first deliverable I have for the group, for the public, is that the audit was on time, so you are compliant with the Audit Act. The release issuance of the financial statements is technically today. So, the release letter, the approvals, that just happened within the last couple of weeks, went back and forth with the state, and they released it today. So, www.osaandm.org is where the financial statements are housed for all counties in the state of New Mexico, including Roosevelt County, and you can now find those there. We also emailed the digital version. That's the actual issuance and signed financial statements, and we are going to be sending the, the printed versions as well. All right, so that's the timeline. Rafino is gonna talk a little bit about some financial highlights. You know, we could dissect, you know, the, the financial statements. There's, it's a lot of information in that document. The financial statements have the picture at June 30th, and then the results of operations. So, these are just a few things that we talked about at the exit conference, and again, we encourage you to just kind of read the financials, get familiar with them, especially if you're a new commissioner, to, you know, kind of familiarize yourselves with the footnotes, the various components that are in financials. So.
Okay, so I'll just briefly go over kind of some of the financial highlights, just to kind of compare fiscal year 21 with fiscal year 20. The revenues increased almost a million dollars in fiscal year 21. Really, it's related to the, the federal grants that you guys received, the American Rescue Plan and the CARESAC grants. Those, those were about $2 million that were received in fiscal year 21 that were, you know, kind of new things. So, that, that's really kind of the big, the big change. There was also some decreases in state monies that you guys received in 20 that kind of offset that large $2 million increase. And then also in expenses, expenses increased a little bit. Really, you know, you guys have been having a lot of road projects, starting in fiscal year 20, finishing in fiscal year 21. So, you know, a lot of those expenses had to do with all the costs of, you know, purchasing supplies and all, you know, all the materials and stuff for those road projects. The cash and investments had a big increase, and a lot of that had to do with, you know, some of it was due to the grant, the grant monies that you received in fiscal year 21 that hadn't been spent yet, and then also that wind farm project that you guys had. You know, a lot of the GRT revenues that you guys received, you know, that's a big reason why there's that large increase in cash. And then capital assets decreased a little bit. There was about $1.7 million in fiscal year 21 of additions. A lot of that, like I said, with the road projects, and then there was about, about $1.5 million in depreciation of, of the other assets, you know, depreciating, depreciating those assets over the life of their, of their lives, which is kind of what the main reason why there's that decrease.
We had several slides dedicated to fulfilling the standards, audit standards with communicating with the commission, and this kind of sums everything up. We're required to perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance, and so we talked about that during the process, and, you know, we don't audit every transaction, every grant, every payroll. It's done on a test basis. So, we, we did conduct the audit in accordance with GAAP during accepted auditing standards and GAGAS, generally accepted government auditing standards. The plan, scope, and timing, we initially had a scope and went over the time in order for the audit to be on time, and pretty much employed that. A lot of hard work went into the process, and so no deviations from the scope and timing. We are required to evaluate the policies, the accounting policies that Roosevelt County employs to ensure you comply with GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles, to ensure that your financial statements are, you know, comparable to any other county in the state of New Mexico and near the county of the United States of America, and so we communicated that your policies do conform to GAAP. There are estimates in your financials. Rafino talked about depreciation, how long things are going to last, roads, buildings, trucks, equipment, and that's an estimate, and we're required to evaluate whether those estimates are reasonable, and we've determined that they are reasonable. Now, the pension and OPEB, we've talked about this, and for anyone that's kind of new to it, there's, there's, there was this new standard put out about six, seven years ago, because Roosevelt County participates in para and retiree healthcare, there's an actuarial study done at the plan level, so at the actual retirement plan, at the post-employment benefit plan, and every participant carves out their portion of any unfunded obligation. And so, since our plan in the state of New Mexico is unfunded, you know, there is an estimate out there as far as what the liability is to fully fund the plan. So, those are significant estimates, but you really don't have any kind of control over those. They're done at the plan level. The actuary determines or helps determine, you know, how long people are going to live, investment return, et cetera, and we don't actually audit the plans either, so they're done at the plan level. So, those are the estimates that are in your financials. There were no difficulties or disagreements. We were pleased to report no material misstatements either, a clean set of books. Amber Liliana, the Treasurers Office, all did, did a good job. No significant exposures. We talked with attorneys that are utilized by the county, and then also evaluated kind of in the minutes and all kinds of different procedures that we perform, and no significant exposures that came to our attention in terms of that we communicate. The opinion on the financial statements, so deliverable number one, the time, timeframe, everything was on time. The overall objective of the audit is to render an opinion. I mentioned the evidence gathering process and substantiating the numbers. So, this is in, in the financials, in front of your financials on our letterhead, we spell out, we perform the audit, and this is our opinion, and this is what users of the financials, so if you go for debt or the legislature, will look at the opinion on whether your financials are fairly presented. So, the opinion we rendered in FY21 was an unmodified or clean opinion. So, that's a good thing. Okay, that's a clean, it's the best opinion you can receive. In other words, that the numbers and the information in there, you can rely upon in a material fashion. So, again, we didn't test everything. It may not be 100% correct, but we gathered evidence to support our opinion that it can be relied upon. our opinion that it can be relied upon. All right. Also, as part of Rafino's gonna cover this as part of the audit, if there's any areas to improve or findings, we're required to report those and we're also required to report on prior year findings, whether they were resolved. So Rafino is gonna touch on that part here. We should be closing in, a couple more minutes and then we'll open up some questions.
All right, so we did have one finding that we considered an other matter, which is the lowest level of, of finding, there's the, the top levels, material weakness. That would be something that's substantial, that would need to be corrected. And then the next level would be a significant deficiency. And that's defined as something that is significant, significant enough that we would need to tell the commission about. And then there's another level that's lower than that is what, you know, what's called an other matter. Which is, you know, kind of what Bobby was saying, something that the county needs to help to the county to improve on things. And then there's some, some requirements that the state has that if, if not if there's an exception that we're required to report and that's, that's kind of what, what's a finding was this year. Pledge collateral was the finding. There's an account that the county has, an investment account, the balance was two hundred fifty thousand when you, when the county put it in. So, you know, covered by FDI insurance. However, at the end of the year, the county did receive some interest earnings on that. And so that made the balance go over that two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Which, and, and then the county didn't have any collateral to cover that additional amount. And so, you know, there was about forty-three dollars with that account that was not insured by the county, by the bank. And so that's what the finding it covers. And, you know, we've been talking with, with the Treasurer's Office and with Amber and, and, you know, I know that they're working on getting that resolved. So that, that was the one finding we had this year. And then, you know, one of the things that we do is we follow up on any prior year findings. There was one prior year finding, material adjustment to fixed assets. And we're glad to report that that was corrected in, in this year. So we did not have that as a repeated finding that was resolved for the current year.
At the exit conference, we also touched on a variety of things that we discussed throughout the year. One thing we talked about, it's been in the news, Burnley County and APS have been subjected to cybersecurity attacks. So, you know, even though you're, you know, what may be considered a rural, rural area or you're not in a, in a, in a city like Albuquerque. These cybersecurity attacks are becoming more prevalent. And so having a penetration test done on your systems to make sure. Now, we do some work on the IT side, but we don't do enough to determine whether your systems would prevent, you know, some sort of attack or mitigate the risk, so again, just kind of keeping that in the, in the back of mind, succession planning, there's some critical positions. And it's hard to find good people, there's no doubt, so just, you know, continue to do a risk assessment on the, 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 the level employees, line level employees and directors of the various departments. If someone left, how would you replace that and continue to have internal controls in place? And then accounting software. I think, you know, we, we had talked about this and we weren't sure about this part of it, but this was a bullet point. And, you know, printing the checks, I think Liliana was gonna look into this, but, you know, these are just some examples, the audit's not just about findings and we're gonna get you, you know, it's more just help, trying to help the county reduce the risk of stuff going wrong, so overall, that's pretty much what we have, on-time audit, clean opinion, we did have the finding. Not severe, but something that got to get addressed and we think you already have, so we'll take any questions at this time, we appreciate your hard work. Amber Liliana, Lael, the whole, the whole team.
Any questions? We're, we're doing.
So, I just want to say thank you again. Bobby and Rafino and our team do a fantastic job of really walking us through those processes and what we're doing. Several of those things we're already implementing or have addressed in the process and obviously Liliana and Lael have done a fantastic job of preparing their documents. Liliana really just fearheaded and made sure that we all knew what the deliverables were and what we needed to do, so can't say enough great things about our team here and what's accomplished and as you see, just to be able to have the results that we're seeing in this audit is great, so what was included in your packet was the resolution that's required for the acceptance and approval and at this point, we would just ask that y'all consider approval of that.
We're supposed to move for adoption. Resolution twenty twenty-two eleven, accept approval of this. Annual financial audit.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the annual finance audit from Mr. Cordova. It'd be a roll call vote. Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Four yes votes and resolution passed. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you.
Have a nice day.
All right. Now back to where we were. New business. We went through Sanchez, so we're on to item B. Ratification of Ms. Dixon's signatory authority for the accounts payable January the first through February the seventh. Ms. Rera.
Yes, we like to ask for ratification of Commissioner Tina Dixon's signature for accounts payable from January first through February seventh. And there were some checks issued with her signature. This typically occurs when there is a change in chairperson. Our bank receives the authorized signatures and we typically have to wait a little bit longer for our software team to update the changes. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
I'll make the motion to accept the signatory authority.
Second.
Been moving second, then we accept the signatory authority, the accounts payable. All those in favor, say aye. Item B passes. On to item C. Roosevelt County Position Classification Review and Compensation Study. Mr. Sean.
Mister Chair Commissioners. We bring forth to you this morning for consideration, the twenty twenty-two Roosevelt County Positions Classification Review and Compensation Study. As you are aware, we have been working on this for several months now. We have finally got a final draft for your consideration. My understanding is we've been doing the salary studies off and on for over a decade. The last one being completed in twenty eighteen. As you are aware, since twenty eighteen, the job market has changed drastically with COVID, et cetera. And we just wanted to do this salary study so that we can stay competitive with wages on all of our positions. Help us to bring in new employees and make sure that we retain the ones that we have. So I have with me Mister Vincent Dermal. He is the one that completed this salary study through S3 sources. I believe he did the last one in two thousand eighteen also. And he's here to address any questions that y'all might have and kind of go over this with you.
Good morning. As Sean mentioned, my name is Vincent Dermal. Best Resource Incorporated. I've been conducting actually these salary studies for Roosevelt County since two thousand ten. We did the initial study in two thousand ten, did an update two thousand fourteen. Again, in eighteen. And again, here we are. And the, I, I think the critical fact to consider there is a salary system like this i- is a system. It's like any other system, it needs maintenance. And my compliments to Roosevelt County and its commitment to maintaining the system insofar as that we have had these successive updates to ensure a level of competitiveness and work toward retention of people. I'm gonna, it's a seventy-six page report and I'm not gonna go through it page by page, I wouldn't do that to you guys. But I will cover some highlights as we go through this and I may make reference to some of the exhibits. I believe you have it in your packets. In any event, you know, the, one of the things I like to start out with is you know, the characteristics of an effective plan basically come down to that it be internally equitable. In other words, jobs be valued in relation to one another in a way that makes sense to people. But secondly, that it be externally competitive, that's how you attract and retain good folks. So that it provides some level of motivation. That it be effectively administered, centralized control through HR, county manager's office and then it applies across the board to all departments and elected officials' offices. And then finally, a continuing program, and this goes to the issue of maintenance that I had mentioned earlier. You know, on page two of the PDF or page two of the report, it's actually page eight of the PDF, page six, excuse me. Just cover the highlights of some of the activities we undertook in updating the, the, the plan. Page three basically looks at your position classifications, this is a well-established plan. There were not major or significant changes, there were the addition of some new classifications related principally, I think, to your DWI grant. And some positions related to detention facility. The exhibit I identify as comp one is strictly, it, it, it's just a listing of the classifications of jobs that have been identified within the county structure. Comp two, i- i- it's kind of an exercise that I go through really that tells me, here's what your position classification titles are, here's what I'm recommending. Predominantly, there were no changes because again, this is an established established study, comp three looked at individual employees. What their current position is, what I'm recommending. This is based on a payroll run that Sean provided me back in, I believe, early January. So it's fairly current. So on page ten of the report, fourteen of the PDF. This is a market-based approach to compensation and we looked at finding the market. You see in about the middle of the page, we collected pay data from the city of Clovis and Portales, Seboa County, Chavez, Currie, Lincoln, Luna County, Sierra Socorro and Valencia Counties, as well as the state of New Mexico and Eastern New Mexico University. These are all
Are you all, sir?
Excuse me?
Are you?
I'm sorry, it's page ten of the report, fourteen of the PDF. Thank you. Okay. These are all publicly, publicly financed institutions within the state of New Mexico, predominantly counties. And the essential need there is, is that in order to determine a prevailing market rate for a position, I need at least five data points. And so when you consider the elected officials' offices, which are unique to counties, such as the treasurer and the assessor's office and so, and clerk. That's why it's a predominantly county comparison. The counties that are here tend to be, be over counties. There may be an exception with Socorro and Sierra. But we try to get organizations that are similar to Roosevelt County in terms of size, et cetera, but also people that are organizations that are in the neighborhood, so to speak, that you directly compete with for people, thus Clovis, Portales and Currie County. In addition to those data sources, we used the New Mexico Department of Workforce Solutions Occupational Employment Survey. It's a very expansive survey that takes into account a lot of employers, we use the Eastern Workforce Investment Act areas as our basis for comparison. And the advantage to the Workforce Investment Act occupational employment survey is it pulls in data from the private sector as well. The data that we collect, I guess I'd like to explain it this way. You know, not, just like, just like Roosevelt County, all these data organizations with the exception of the OES have a July one through June thirty fiscal year, so typically the salary plans that I'm getting to conduct the analysis are, are at this point, at least seven months old. Eight months, actually. And, and we're trying to develop a plan that has, let's call it legs, to carry Roosevelt County through in the future, so we apply a process I call aging, which is to take their data and apply two percent per year and forecast it forward, we forecasted in this instance to July one of twenty twenty-two, beginning of your next fiscal year. And, and, and that's consistent with the approach that we've used over the past ten years and I think what it does is enables the county's program to stay competitive for a period of several years. Again, we did the initial study in ten, update fourteen, update eighteen, and here we are, so you, you get some life to it over time. My only concern today quite frankly, is the issue of inflation. We don't know or we can't necessarily tell, although intuitively, what I do know is it's gonna drive wages. There have been historically certain job classifications, particularly law enforcement, detention, et cetera, that have been under a significant amount of wage pressure over the years. I see that frankly, I don't see that abating. That will continue. In addition, lower level positions, there's been a significant amount of upward pressure strictly as a function of the increase in the minimum wage. And so you see a lot of positions lower end getting pushed up in terms of compensation level. The, the comparison that I do is what I call a structure-to-structure comparison, I don't look necessarily individual salaries. I look at salary ranges. And I compare the midpoint of your salary range for a particular position to the collective midpoints of these other organizations that we're serving, it's a more stable kind of basis of comparison to try to determine where you, where you are in the marketplace and what competitive position is. The, the one exception to, or the exceptions to this structure are the appointed positions, specifically the chief deputies, under sheriff, executive secretary to the sheriff and the county manager. They are not included in the pay structure per se. But we do have we have collected data on each of those positions. And that's all accumulated and reflected for each of those positions in appendix B, which is the salary survey for appointed positions. And then the actual survey data for the classified positions is in appendix A. All right, and, and, and so what it yields what, what we found is that in looking at the Roosevelt County's current structure to the market, there twenty of twenty-eight positions that we were able to collect data on were below the market. Which makes sense, I mean, it's at least four years old now since we last did the study, so it needs to be updated. Seven were within the market and it was one actually that was slightly above the market. And that's all shown on page eleven of the report, fifteen of the PDF. And it's graphically illustrated in comp four C, which is page twelve. Page sixteen of the PDF. A, a similar basis of comparison is shown from the appointed positions, which is on page thirteen, seventeen of the PDF. And since in that instance, okay, in, in the instance of the classified people where there is a formal structure, I consider being within the market plus or minus five percent. Conversely, when you look at the appointed position, since there is no structure and we're comparing actual salaries, I do a plus or minus ten percent. Be that as it may, it shows that you have four of the six positions are within the, within the market, essentially one is below and one is vacant with no income. That again is illustrated on page thirteen or seventeen of the PDF. And, and, and the graphically illustrated on page fourteen. When you look at page fifteen and sixteen, this is a permanent, what we call a permanent salary range structure that was adopted by Roosevelt County in two thousand ten. The range is, is what we call fifty percent wide, in other words, the maximum of the range is fifty percent greater than the minimum. You determine the midpoint simply by adding the min and the max and divide by two. Then each salary range goes up by a factor of two and a half percent. So what you'll see on page 16, there's an awful lot of salary ranges. But the reason for that is, is that we're assigning positions to a salary range based on the determined prevailing market rate. And so we have a lot of slices, but we can get as close as possible to the actual prevailing market rate with this kind of a structure. All right. Then in addition, I'd point out that a number of departments, et cetera, within Roosevelt County have utilized a step plan. What, what I illustrate in the report is essentially what we call an open range that articulates a minimum, midpoint, and maximum. The step system divides that range by multiple steps, and each 17. And Sean put this together, and it, but it actually, which is an appendix C, and it just shows how the step structure would fit into this permanent salary. So then we get into position salary range assignments. There were 36 classifications identified within the county. I was able to determine a prevailing market rate for 28 of those, or 77.8, almost 78%, which is pretty good. Meaning that of those 28 positions, I did an analysis of their job content to match them up regardless of job title, but really what is it that they do that matches what's in Roosevelt County? Determine the prevailing market rate, assign them to a, recommend assignment to a salary range that corresponds to that prevailing market rate. You know, obviously, in, in that instance, there are eight positions that we did not find sufficient data to determine a prevailing market. But what we rely on in that instance is linkage to another, what we call benchmark position that actually has a prevailing market rate in order to assign them to a salary range. And it's based on an analysis that I conduct that looks at the complexity of the work, the requirements of the job, both educational, experiential, and so forth. So anyway, page 18 of the report, 22 of the PDF is an exhibit I call comp five. It lists again all the job classifications identified in comp one. It show, it has a column that shows what the current salary range is, and then a column that shows what the recommended salary range is. And then the actual salary range itself for each of those recommended salary ranges. What you can see by a quick review of that is there's been pressure and, and jobs have gone up in value. That's again what I call comp five, comp six, which begins on page 20 of the report, 24 of the PDF is strictly a comp five is a listing by job class and code. Comp six is just descending order of salary range assignment from highest to lowest. Comp seven, 22 of the report, 28 of the, or six of the PDF. Remember I mentioned that there were some jobs that we did not collect sufficient data, again, needing five data points in order to determine a prevailing market rate, shows those positions that they were linked to. And the value of linkage among anything is, and, and most of this linkage was established in previous years, although there are a couple new ones. Is that as the market moves, you link a job to a position of similar occupational requirements. And so as the benchmark position increases in value, the linked non-benchmark position increases accordingly, corresponding to the same market pressures. Okay, the bottom line. The estimated fiscal impact salary plan, which is discussed on page 23 of the report, 27 of the PDF, and illustrated in comp eight, is that should the commission adopt these recommendations, there are 10 positions that would fall below the minimum of the new recommended salary. And of course, our first recommendation always is to bring those folks to the, at least the minimum of the recommended salary range. The cost, and this is strictly direct pay, doesn't include para and insurance and FICA and so forth, is a little over, a little over $22,500 on an annualized basis. It's less than 1% of payroll. There are 10 of them. And what may be no surprise to anybody is all those 10 folks are in the detention center. So otherwise, 36 of the 66 employees are between the minimum and the midpoint. Let's see. Comp nine on page 25 shows a breakdown of that information by department. Page 26 of the report, 10 of the, or not 10, 30 of the PDF. It's, it's just something that I include in terms of guidelines and recommendations to the organization with respect to pay levels below the minimum. That anybody in that situation be raised to the minimum. Pay levels above the maximum, seriously recommend that those folks be frozen. We also recommend a position and range approach to the distribution of pay increases in order to try to move people collectively toward market. The, the, these are all suggestions more than anything, and ultimately I yield to whatever works best for the organization that they adopt salary administration guidelines that, that fit their organizational culture and historic requirements. And then finally, let's see, on page 28 of the PDF, 32 of the report, our specific recommendations. We certainly recommend that, that the commission approve the classification assignments that are illustrated in comp three. Reaffirm prevailing rate midpoint policy. Simply what that means is that reaffirm the commitment to compete at 100% of the market, which is assigning to midpoints that are close to the prevailing market rate. Again, salary ranges to the minimum, bringing people's salaries to the minimum. Salaries above the maximum being frozen. Consider in-range adjustments. Also recognition that grant-funded positions are really governed by the grant rather than this particular pay structure. Depending on the organization's willingness sometimes to contribute general fund money to supplement what the grant does. You might then include them, but, but the caveat is that the grant will prevail. And then finally, the advice that we've been given for 10 years that you guys have been following diligently is to maintain a continuing program. I think it's been, you know, sufficient for Roosevelt County to update this kind of study every four years, I think it's been the history. The only caveat I'd offer is to keep an eye on attraction and retention in the face of potential inflation. I always like to share this war story. I've been doing this for, as you can tell from my weathered appearance, I've been doing this for a long time. Back in the late 70s in the private sector, I was working for a company. We had a facility outside Cleveland where inflation was so rampant that we were doing these surveys every six months. I, I'm too old. I don't want to get to that point again. So I hope we're not headed there, but in essence, those are the recommendations, and I'll, I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Six answers a question.
So you did say that the amounts that you give, that's not including any of the benefits, so that would be?
In terms of cost? Yes, ma'am, that is correct. It does not include benefits. It's strictly a direct pay cost.
And what about the appointed and the electeds? Are you, is that including? I, I understand that it's including, but are you suggesting we adopt that as well, the pay rates? Is that what you're asking for, considering voting on as well?
Well, let me, let me clarify and be sure that we're on the same page. All I have addressed are the appointed positions. I've not addressed elected officials, given that, that it's really a statutory matter. With respect to the appointed positions, I include the information to inform the commission and the elected officials. Given that these salaries are, again, not part of the plan, that they're a function in many instances of action from the commission, I think it's only appropriate that I provide you the data, and then you guys proceed as, as you see fit.
Anyone else have something?
Commissioner.
I have a question.
Please.
On your study, you said you didn't add the benefits and para and all that. How does that not figure into what their, their pay would be? You know, to me, if somebody's paying more percentage of your insurance than someone, say, in Curry County is making more money, but they're having to pay more money, how does that not figure into your?
Well, what, what I would, what I was asked to do, what I did in this instance, was a salary range update. In, in, in past years and for other clients, I've done benefit studies as well, and I think I've done them for Roosevelt County in the past that show contribution rates. In other words, how much various counties pay for insurance versus, and the employee pays as well as para and so forth. That was not part of the scope of this year's study.
This, this study was just based on salary.
Just on wages, yeah.
Overall.
Right. And, and quite honestly, I, I, I think if I look, you know, I'm relying on my memory here, and in my advanced years, it's become less reliable. But I think in the last, or maybe the previous study, we looked at Roosevelt County's, you know, benefit position, weren't in bad shape, you know, so. And, and those don't change as frequently and as dramatically as wages tend to do. It's more evolutionary than revolutionary.
I believe it was like 10 when, when, when did we do the? We restated our benefits of, remember that?
And when we, we did raise the insurance contribution when the state impacted, that would have been?
That was it?
I think in the, like, right around 2018 or something, we went up in percentage points on those. And that is not something that I'm familiar with since I've been here since 2014. We haven't done any kind of benefit study to look at that, but this is something that we can certainly bring up for the commission when we talk about budgeting. What we're asking today, just like we did in 2018, we ask the commission to adopt the plan, and then we can use the plan to put together numbers. If you'll recall in your budget workshops, these are presented, and we present salary options. So across the board, this is what it's going to look like to get everybody to steps. Thankfully, with the COLA work and everything that you, the commission has done to this point, you can see when we first started this plan, we were 19 under. Once we adopted the COLA, we went to 10 under, and so we saw the positive adjustment that we knew the COLA would rectify for our employees. The other thing is that we have, I have reached out to the elected officials. We do feel like there will be a resolution to present to adjust the rates, because we have not adjusted elected official pay since 2018. So that will be, that's all set in resolution. So elected officials and their appointed positions are all set by resolution by the commission. That is not something that's set through this study. So that will be action that the commission would then consider at that time. This allows us, though, to be able to project and give the commission some options as far as what our budget will allow and what personnel we can, like what we can do with our personnel. So several of those will be presented as you, as you'll recall, when we present our workshop budgets, you see personnel, benefits, para, FICA, all of that comes in. So when you see these numbers, it will actually be presented in the big picture of things through the budget workshops.
And so just for information, we, while we're bringing this for your guys to look at today, this would not go into effect till next fiscal year. So it will not be immediate, but we do need to start working on that budget and projecting things to that measure.
Ms. Emblen, if, if we go ahead and vote on to accept this, does that mean we have to in our budget pay these wages? I mean, if it's accepted.
So the only thing that we will bring that is like Mr. Girmal suggested, is we want to bring the ones that are not to their minimum point. So we would adjust those to make sure that we stay within the minimum. But we also, we don't take everyone to midpoint. It doesn't work that way, and you cannot, that causes a compaction within your pay scale. You have people that have been here at the road department for 20 years that are at a level that should not be equal to someone that has been at the road department for a year or two. So that's where you have your step plan. That's where you have everyone sprinkled out. That's where you have your hierarchy on your positions and their responsibilities, as well as, again, you have some space. So you have a minimum and you have a maximum, and then you have 17 steps in between to make sure that we do not have that compaction. We all feel the pressure, so we're going to have to look at, like we shared with the commission, the incentive pay was a short-term solution to a long-term problem. So that ends in June. So as of July, we had to figure out how to raise the base, but then it has to feather all the way through the pay scale. You cannot just impact the bottom tier and not, it has to affect every position throughout, and it's got to be done equally through some kind of percentage to get them there, and this allows us the opportunity to begin to project. We just need to have this adopted like we did.
Starting point.
Correct.
It's also going to help us to get more towards a merit-based compensation program. I think that will significantly help us also.
Now, let me ask a question. Mr. Joe. Keeping this in perspective. We're voting on this by voting, an affirmative vote would say, we're going to use this information in calculating our pay grades and figuring our budget. It's not the vote that we are going to actually give, set our pay grades according to the recommendations of it. It's just we're just going to use it to formulate our own pay grade. Is that right or wrong? I mean, I want to know exactly what, I'm, I'm, what you're, what you're saying is, is logical and makes sense to me, but I'm just not sure exactly the consequences of the vote.
So this is a tool that we use in human resources, up in administration to be able to determine the pay levels. We need this as a tool to work off of. But basically what you're saying is one of the same. So yes, it guides us. We ultimately still have to have a balanced budget as the commission is aware. So there are times where revenues did not allow for any type of adjustment, and that is always an option. Like if employee wages were to stay flat, this is where everyone would be. But then we bring additional options of this kind of percentage throughout of, okay, if we raise everyone, this is what it would look like. Oftentimes, it's across the board percentage-wise or however that may be. But this would be the guide that you would adopt for us to figure July 1 rate. That's how it's historically been done the last four times. I don't know if that answered your question, Commissioner.
We're going to use this as a guide.
But it's officially adopted, and this is, this becomes our start point rather than the one that we have from 2018. So it just replaces that. Yes, sir.
I think I understand. Thank you.
Uh huh, yes, sir.
Commissioner Lopez called last night and gave his apologies for not being here. Commissioner Lopez, um, called last night and, um, gave his apologies for not being here today. But he said that, um, he would respectfully ask if we would just table this to the very next meeting because he had some questions and comments on it that he would like to go over and then he just asked if we would, um, table it to the next meeting. Would that be an issue to do it at the very next one?
Um, no, it certainly could be. It's just going to delay the budget process for the county, um, if the commission chose to do that. Um, and also, uh, Mr. Garmel will not likely be in attendance unless we want to pay him again to come back and do that. Cause this was part of the package is to come and present. So I respect and understand where Commissioner Lopez has requested and come from. It does put our office in a little bit of a tight bind, um, by, again, our next meeting isn't until March, uh, 8th. And so that delays us being able to really move forward with the budget process because all the department heads have their budget work at this point. We're needing this so that we can begin our work on the, the HR part, which is the biggest part of your budget is the personnel.
Hmm, with the new one, we're just looking at a $26,000 change in the budget if, if we brought up what we're not at on the minimum, right?
And that's going to be minimum anyways. You're going to see more than that as we projected with your incentive pays and everything along those lines. Uh, that was more along the lines of somewhere around 150,000 that y'all had instituted for the last six months. So you're going to see that the 22,000 is not anywhere close to really what you're going to have to see in the overall adjustment that y'all are going to have to make to personnel through the, the pay.
But that's going to include all of the, the monies that we had that were covering those, um, adj, those, those stipends or whatever that we gave. So we have that money, but that's the COVID funds or whatever.
Correct. The, the.
Okay.
The stipends, the, the incentive pay, the stipends and such, those are all tied to the federal funds. But those are, again, it was a short-term solution like for staff retention and everything that you're trying to do. We're just, when we get to this point of raising everyone up, again, as we phase it through, you're going to see a significant cost regardless of how.
But come budget time, it's still going to be our decision if we can make.
You have to decide how you're going.
We're not going to be held to, we have to pay this.
We have to pay this minimum though, right?
Just the minimum that is said is what we go by. I mean, this is, but again, if it's something that the commission steps back and goes, hey, we can't fiscally do this. We need to revise. Um, that's something we come back and we look at because ultimately it comes down to a balanced budget. But again, please keep in mind, this is not the first time the commission has done this. This is ongoing historical, uh, a proven effective tool because our employees are the most important things that we have. So we just have to figure out how to remain competitive and to keep that edge on our retention.
If, if I could interject.
Um, go ahead.
What, one of, one of the, I think, um, crucial values in, in updating the structure, in other words, assigning jobs to a, a, a range that is more commensurate with the market value of the position is, uh, in that when you're recruiting, trying to attract people, um, that's what they're looking at. The, the minimum to a large extent, which would obviously go up as a result of these adjustments, uh, reflects in many instances, your hiring. And, and so whether it's detention officers or, or road crews and so forth, in order to maintain a competitive position in the hiring process. Let's put it this way, were, were you not to make the adjustment, you're effectively then, uh, competing with ranges that are, you know, four or five years old. And, and I think it would put the county in a position of disadvantage uh, in the marketplace. Just an opinion.
Yes.
I made a previous question.
Which one?
I'm ready to vote.
Ready to vote? Okay. Uh, Chair entertain a motion. Is, is that a motion to pass or?
I move that we, uh, terminate discussion and secure an immediate. So.
Oh, so I'm going to take that as a motion to accept the plan.
I move that we vote on, vote on the motion.
Yeah. There, there has, there hasn't been a motion made yet to accept it.
Then I move that we accept the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the, the new county ratification position classification review study. Mr. Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
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 For yes folks. Thank you.
Chair, members of the commission, the, the last thing I'd like to say, I, I really want to extend my gratitude to both Sean and Amber. Tremendous help in this and I very much appreciate the opportunity to assist Roosevelt County. Thank you.
I, I thank you for all your help and answering our questions too.
I've got one question for you. Even though we've already done that. Um, so it is my understanding that if we have any issues, we can ratify this. We can fix anything between now and budget time, right? Okay.
All right.
That way he can put his two cents if he wants to change something. Okay.
All right, let's move on to item seven. Contracts, agreements, requirements. Item A, request of approval of memorandum of understanding with Department of Finance Administration, local government driving while intoxicated, misreading.
Yes, commissioners. Uh, another part of, of preparing for the FY 23 application is getting all the, the paperwork in place. And a memorandum of understanding is for you now. Um, I kind of went through and looked at the memorandum. You have it in your packet. It, it's basically just an understanding what the division is going to do, Department of Finance, how they, the requirements they give us, the guidelines, um, all the, the things that they require of us. And then the second part of it is our program will meet those guidelines. We've been in compliance as far as I know for, since probably 1997. I've never known of any, uh, of heard in the past that the DWI program was, uh, out of compliance with the state. So we just want to continue that. And a memorandum of understanding is one of those steps. Um, is there more that you would like for me to read, point out, questions on? Like I said, the first, uh, one through six is the division requirements. You know, their statutes, their information. It's mainly addressing confidentiality, um, is for information, how they want us to handle that. And then the last three are, are basic understanding that we will follow HIPAA and follow all of the confidentiality requirements. Um, and we'll, we will provide information to them. But it's all in a, in a situation where we don't share it out, either of us. So, questions from anyone?
Miss Chair.
Yes, I move we approve the memorandum of understanding with the Department of Finance and Administration.
Second. I move a second that we accept memorandum of understanding. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes on to B. Ms. Reed again.
Thank you. Um, thank you for passing the memorandum of understanding. As we move on to the statement of assurances, this is just another requirement from the Department of Finance. There are 18 different, uh, parts to this and they are all in trying to keep us in compliance with our statutes, our rules, our regulations and our guidelines. Um, you know, through state law and they're kind of wordy. There's a few of them that don't apply to us. Uh, like number six, we do not qualify for the detoxification grant. So we don't apply. There's only six counties that are large enough to qualify for that. But for the most part, we qualify for the rest and we follow them to, again, just as the memorandum of understanding, we want to stay in compliance and we want to assure them that we're going to follow the rules that they set for us. And that they're pretty cut and dried and basic. You don't, you can't get out of them very much.
Nobody has any questions? I'll make motion to approve the agreement with the local DWI funds.
Say.
I move a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, Ms. Reed.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you for allowing me to write this application and all of these forms are part of the application.
Appreciate your work. Moving on to D.
There's a C.
Oh, there's a C. Oh goodness. I want to see two of them. C.
Stuck around for this one.
Approval of interdepartmental agreement for use of locally DWI funds. Ms. Reed again.
Um, yes, this is change in, uh, situations. This is an agreement, um, that we will want to establish with Sheriff's Department. Back in the fall, um, you guys accepted, you guys, you ladies, the commission, accepted the reversion funds from FY 21. And some of those were designated for minor equipment and a certain amount of that was designated for the sheriff's department. And that's what this agreement, uh, gives them $6,100 to use for minor equipment. There are, um, guidelines and, um, they have the specifics. They already have, um, some quotes. They're ready to move on spending the money. We just need to have this in place. And Randy, uh, in the past has looked at this as a city official. So this has, has been looked at through legal before. I haven't passed it through legal as far as county law.
I take care of that. And so from the county, Randy, as always, has already reviewed all of these before they ever come on either.
Yeah. So it, it has been used in the past and I just, uh, hope that you might consider us, uh, letting us make the agreement with them and let them spend the money.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Dixon made a motion to approve.
Is that a second, Mr. Scott? Yes, sir.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Ms. Reed.
Thank you. And do know, I appreciate your help with all this, this change over that we've made. It's been an adjustment, but I've had a good experience, especially, uh, moving into working with Liliana and Amber and of course Sean, all the administrators. Uh, it's been a good change. It's an old dog having learned new tricks, but I'm, I'm getting it. So, thank you.
Appreciate it. Now on to D. Approval of statement of work to secure cyber security consulting services. Ms. Hamilton, Mr. Gossett.
Um, yes. So I have our IT genius here with us today. Thankfully he's making sure everything else runs accordingly. Um, but included in your packet was the statement of work. So, um, this is something, uh, we've been working on uh, overall cybersecurity now for two, three years, really pretty hardcore and focused, I would say. Um, and one of the things that the ARPA funds does allow and has asked counties to, um, really address is the cybersecurity. So whether it's training, it's penetration tests, it's all wraparound services. That is something that's, um, available for that funding. Um, and the statement of work that's in here is something actually that, um, Chase was able to locate for us in terms of what we're able to do with this. And there's a couple of different ones that we're going to ask you to consider. Um, and I will. The first one is the statement of work with SecureWorks. And there are, this is a new contract again, a new agreement we're asking y'all to consider.
Chairman, commissioners, uh, basically what this is going to do, uh, SecureWorks is going to do two things for the county. Uh, they're going to do an external penetration test, which basically simulates an actual attack on the county. Uh, they're going to test for weaknesses and give us a pretty detailed report on, you know, things that we can do to remediate that in the future if it actually happens. Again, this is something that most private companies do, most public companies do. Uh, the auditors are requesting it. Um, the other thing that, uh, SecureWorks is going to be doing for us is called vulnerability scanning, which basically means we're going to be putting a device inside the network that's going to be doing vulnerability scanning all over. And that's actually going to go over a period of a year instead of like, uh, just a single test. And it's more comprehensive and it'll keep us updated with, you know, because these attacks, they, they, uh, sorry, they're always changing basically. Uh, and, um, this will actually kind of keep us up to date. If a new vulnerability comes out and it detects something in the system, it'll give us a report so we can fix it. So this kind of gets us that requirement on what we're needing to do in terms of getting a penetration test and vulnerability scanning. Um, so that's kind of what we're looking at here, uh, specifically with SecureWorks. So, any questions?
Ms. Simone, do we have that scheduled in our budget to pay for it?
Um, this is actually something that again is available through the federal funds and it's less than 20,000. So we would be able to go directly with this client. We don't have to get three ta, three quotes because it's below that threshold. But it is actually part of what we're recommending for the federal, um, based on the communications. And we've had, um, two different meetings, I guess now with our department heads and elected officials. It's kind of been an ongoing discussion. And I know some of y'all have seen like, uh, so there's phishing emails that are going out. There's a lot of things. We're doing a lot of testing. Um, there have been some very good results coming from the test for us to identify some need for additional training. So this is one of those things. Like the auditor said, we want to ensure, uh, we put our policy into place, I think two years ago now. And so we're just continuing to work through their recommendations.
Does anybody have anything else? I have a motion to approve. Say, I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, going on to Adam E. Ms. Hamilton, Mr. Gossett again.
Yeah, so this is the agreement with CISA. This is the federal government part and we're just asking for ratification of this one. Uh, because this is, um, free service that Chase has been very diligently pursuing for about, what, three years now we've been on the list, two or three. Um, it has been an incredibly burdensome process for him to really navigate through. So we do appreciate his continued dedication to this. And this is again, just part of the cyber response.
So basically what this is, is back when we were looking at, uh, getting a penetration test, vulnerability scanning, uh, CISO was an option, uh, because they're, uh, they kind of do it at, at no cost to, you know, government entities. Uh, the downside to that is you're on a very long waiting list. And when you're a very small county, you know, you're the small fish in the pond. And that's kind of, you know, we opened this up probably two and a half years ago. I started sending in the applications, getting the county on the list. And the last we had heard was, we got your, all of your stuff. It's all good. You're on the list and didn't hear anything. And then COVID happened and, you know, so there even, and then not only with COVID along that, you know, you had a lot of very big, uh, kind of cyber incidents happen that they've been involved in. Uh, luckily we have, uh, made a, another contact within the organization. Things are moving ahead. Uh, we're getting a very kind of a high level vulnerability scan. This is essentially kind of the same thing that SecureWorks is doing, except, um, I do, we just don't know the time, you know, we're going to be doing both of them. I mean, you might as well take advantage of all coverage and, uh, you know, programs are out there, but I honestly am not just banking on this one in a timely manner doing, I mean, we'll do it whenever it comes through and everything's good. But in the meantime, that's why we're doing SecureWorks. Yeah. So.
Anybody else have anything? Entertainer motion.
Second.
I move saying that we accept the agreement. Adam E. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, Chase.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Moving on to Adam F, approval of the tower and internet access lease agreement for the Millsand Fire Department. Ms. Hamilton.
Yes, Mr. Chair, commissioners. So included in your packet was the tower and internet access lease. As y'all know, we've been doing some work out there. Um, Mr. Montiel's been working very closely with the Millsand Volunteer Fire to get everything situated in terms of their repeaters and their towers. We're just, um, asking for y'all's approval of this monthly, uh, new monthly lease agreement. This is something again that Mr. Nudson has reviewed and this is something that will be in their budget. They're able to use their state fire allocations for this.
Chairman, I move we approve seven F.
I move second that we approve seven F. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. On to G. Request approval of sole service award of use agreement with Rosewood County Community Development Corporation regarding the use of management of Rosewood County. Request approval of sole service award of use agreement with Rosewood County Community Development Corporation regarding the use of management of Roosevelt County Enterprise Center.
Yes, so um Commissioners, um, on two occasions, we did release an RFP to use and manage Roosevelt County's Enterprise Center. Um, on the first occasion, we had one RFP submitted and was deemed non-responsive. And second, um, release, we did not receive any RFPs. Um, I would like to, at this point, proceed, recommend proceeding with a direct contract to ensure the county's need for these services are met. I would like to request the approval through a sole source award with Roosevelt County Community Development Corporation.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of seven G and uh the sole source award to the Roosevelt County Community Development Corporation to use the Roosevelt County's Enterprise Center. Been moving second to accept the corporation regarding the management of Roosevelt County's center. Anyway, F G. All those posts, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. On to elected officials, Ms. Sanchez, Treasurer's Office.
Good morning again. Well, I have bitter sweet news, I guess, that I want to inform the commission. On um, let's see, when was, how my date? February second. Due to the quick work of Ms. Ramos in balancing our bank statement, she identified a fraudulent check that had made its way through our account. We identified the check, called the bank, and fortunately, they were able to um get the money back from the bank, from the other institution where the uh bank had, or the check had been deposited. We are going to, or we have um put a element on our account that is called positive pay. So what will happen is we will load a file to the bank and that file um will have every check that um goes through the the bank. It will compare against that file. If there is a check that is not in that file, then um I will get an alert and I will have to go and review that check and decide whether we need to pay it or not. That will just add some extra security um to our account. When the the check went through, it was nothing that um was too identifiable as being fraud to us. So it didn't alarm us at the time. It was only until uh she started balancing and noticed that the actual check was not in our finance software. And it should have been um to be able to uh clear through the bank. So um the Sheriff's Office is investigating as well, and as I get updates, I will let you know. But as of now, the money has been returned to our account. So luckily, there has been, there was no loss with it. Does anyone have any questions on that?
How much was the check?
Sixteen thousand, seven hundred fifty-six dollars and nine cents. Made out to an individual with our signatures, with approved signatures. So talk about being creative and and I don't know if it was not necessarily cybercrime, but it was definitely some some crazy fraud. So now we'll go on to the the nitty gritty and talk about cash. So as
Yeah, wasn't near that. I can't even write my own name, much less.
Were there any, no, that's fine. Were there any other questions? Okay. Um, so we'll talk about cash and uh beginning cash in general fund as of December thirty-first was two million, eight hundred twenty-one thousand, three hundred forty-two dollars, sixty-three cents. You had deposits of two million, six hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred twenty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. And we had um decreases credits of eight hundred twenty-five thousand, one hundred eighty-five dollars and eleven cents, leaving your ending December balance of general fund cash at four million, six hundred fifteen thousand, three hundred eighty-one dollars and ninety cents. So we did see um that nice chunk of the taxes coming in there um at the end. And then January, we also have received, um, the will, we should, January and March, we should receive also um some cabs. And the um cabs and protests come in. And then we'll have a little bit of a lull and we'll pick back up April through June as far as um we see in tax collecting. And I'll stand for any questions.
Mr. Chair, if I can. So Lael is being very humble. Uh, what her office did just shows that the internal controls and the policies that they have put into place work. So there are some really sad individuals out there that will do really questionable things. And the way that this was handled and with the speed and efficiency, just cannot say enough. Again, you have a local bank that has a relationship with our treasurer to be able to go through this. So to ensure that the bank record is happening in a timely manner, to make sure that we're on top of this. Again, it just reflects that their office is following their policy procedures and the internal controls that we spent so many years adopting, as y'all recall. So this is, you know, you see all the work that we did in fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, and it's two for addition here. Because as you discussed, like sixteen thousand is very significant, but it was stopped, it was prevented, it was reported appropriately. And this will not be one of those audit findings, you know? That's a kudo to their good work that they're doing down there. So cannot explain and reiterate that enough.
Well, thank you.
Well, thank you. Moving on to detention. Ms. Ramsey.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, from my report, I have the facility count at sixty-six. Uh, females are at fourteen, males are at fifty-two. We have three out of counties. Our total number for bookings in January was at fifty-one. Our releases were at fifty-seven. Uh, we transported two within the last few weeks to get up to DOC. We have zero in restricted housing. For our billing, it's eight hundred and twenty-five for the month of January. Um, our MAP program is continuously growing. We have one participant um receiving medication through that. And then we have ten participants receiving group counseling and individual counsellings. Um, and we actually are doing ongoing interviews to to add to our participant list for that program. Uh, for our facility maintenance, our shower areas are still being worked on in the day rooms. We have day rooms nine, eight, and eleven is currently underway right now. Uh, COVID, we still have our our deep cleaning going on. We have our cleaning machine that we are currently using every day in the hallways and day rooms, posts, all of those things. And we also just increased it a little bit by having the detainees starting to wear the N-ninety-fives while they're out cleaning the hallways and in those areas as well. I I did want to report something major that happened within the detention center. When we had the the freeze on the fourth, um, the heater went out in Sallyport. And it caused a blocked line within our suppression system in the Sallyport. So the alarms started going off and and the the staff there started doing exactly what they're trained to do and running through the day rooms and making sure that everybody was safe and and clearing those those areas. Uh, and also making sure our support staff was safe as well. And we had someone going in our administration area, going around and making sure everybody was good in those areas as well. So the blockage in those suppression systems caused the pipes to burst. So water started pouring from the ceiling in Sallyport. Our Sallyport is where we were storing all of our current, our, all of our new camera system. Yes. So once that was recognized, our staff immediately started taking action and moving all that stuff out. And and I mean, we're slipping and sliding through all of this. It's freezing as soon as it's hitting the ground. Um, we were able to save all of the cameras after after they were looked through. So lots and lots of money. Our, we had uh staff in the Sallyport moving all that camera system stuff out, all the electrical equipment out of there. Uh, we had staff putting salt down so we would stop slipping and sliding everywhere. Uh, Gary helped us turn the suppression system off. He fixed it that that same day. Um, we also had some of our staff in our training room, which we started moving all the equipment in there and started removing the the drenched boxes that were ruined. Ever, most everything was in plastic, so it was all protected and saved. But I just wanted to share with you guys what amazing teamwork that shift had that day and just how fast that they they reacted to that adversity. So I just wanted to share that with you guys. It was, it was a beautiful thing to see how our staff was supporting our detention center and taking care of that right away. And that is all I have for you. I stand for any questions?
Does anybody have anything, Ms. Ramsey?
Yes, ma'am.
Finance. Ms. Rivera. Yeah, we're gonna take a break.
Okay. In your packet is the second quarter um Department of Finance reports. Uh, the recap report captures all of the funds' activity from July first of twenty twenty-one to uh December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. In the recap report, you will see revenues and expenditures and the corresponding adjusting balances for each fund. All funds are performing well and remained near or at the fifty percent expenditure mark through December thirty-first. As of December thirty-first, general fund had an adjusted balance of a little over eleven point five million. This balance, of course, includes the investments the county has. Um, and finally, the road fund had an adjusted balance of a little over one point eight million. Um, with that being said, there's still um some purchase orders that are open that we will be closing, and you'll see more expenditures on that. Uh, with that being said, I'll stand for any questions regarding the second quarter DFA report. This is what it looks like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Healthcare. Amber's, oh, there's.
Good morning.
I'm like, I didn't see her. Do we need to go into?
Yes, if we may.
They moved saying that we're going to indigent board. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're now in.
Okay, so dispatch, we had um thirty-three claims for twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred thirty-six and eighty-two cents. Um, the total for approval are twenty-three cl- claims, fourteen thousand, ninety-seven and forty cents. Disapproved, ten claims, fifteen thousand, seven hundred thirty-nine and forty-two cents. The two for Fedco emergency physicians are denied for uh past timely filing. And there's eight for Roosevelt General Hospital for thirteen thousand, five hundred ninety-nine and forty-two cents. Disapproved for past timely filing. Um, and then we have approved five for emergence, uh, Fedco emergency physicians. Approved twelve for Roosevelt General Hospital and six for Concord Radiology. Do you have any questions?
Those ones to hospital, is that because the individual didn't file them timely or is the hospital?
The hospital.
I'll make a motion, we come out of indigent.
Say.
All those in favor, come out of indigent, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all right, we're now out of indigent. Chair would entertain a motion to accept the
Second.
The moon saying that we accept the the indigent report from Ms. Flores. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lovato with the road. Please.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, we continue to work on our LGRF twenty-two projects. Uh, we're gonna start our capital outlay projects probably the next week. Depending on if we get our grid together, but we're gonna be starting it pretty quick. Um, we continue to do our maintenance. Uh, we're blading. Uh, we have been cleaning cattle guards and fixing cattle guards. Um, and I know that's never-ending, it's always something. Uh, trimming trees also. Uh, sent a crew out last week to go pick up trash again. Uh, we had five dumps, dumpfuls of them. Uh, it's our sixteen-foot goose neck that we got from, I can't remember what grant it was, but we got a grant. And we've been using it periodically and it's amazing how much trasher is, because I know we didn't gather all of it up. And we just continue to pick this stuff up. And it will be ongoing, I'm assuming. Um, our building is coming along. It looks like uh the end of the month, first of March. Hopefully, we get to move in. So everybody's working really hard out there. We got Yucca and Nixon, everybody working out there trying to get all the stuff. Uh, we also received our tractor, the shredder. It's a wonderful thing. Can't wait to use it this spring. So that's gonna be real nice. We start sometime uh in the next couple of weeks. We have wild wildfire classes. Uh, the guys that have been there for a while will, they'll do a refresher. Um, but the, we have a lot of greenhorns, so it's gonna be like thirty-two hours of classes that we'll hold at the shop on Sundays. And that's all I got for now. Y'all got any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just feel like, thank you for the job that you, great job that you and your department do.
Well, thank you, sir. Um, the team is always working hard and they're they're an excellent team, so. Thank you.
Manager, Ms. Hamilton.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Um, so, super excited that we get to acknowledge again, um, this year, we again received a FY twenty Audit and Accountability Award for Continued Excellence. Um, this certificate's awarded to Roosevelt County in recognition of continued audit achievement and financial management excellence. And this is coming um from New Mexico Counties and the Office of the State Auditor and was presented um to the county and at the uh January Legislative Conference. So we will put that up on our um shelf behind you there. And then also wanted to recognize uh our safety committee really runs and really pushes for each one of our um departments and elected officials offices to complete their necessary RAP training, and we were recognized for that again. Um, you see the other RAP awards that are up here, and this is for twenty twenty-one. And this is again a a brief program that we have that keeps us very safety minded. So our departments, our offices meet together. I know in admin, we meet together once a month, and we go through each month lessons that, again, just to keep you focused. And there's everything from um trip and fall and heat stroke and cybersecurity to everything else. I mean, it's just, it covers a wide gamut. So I'm really proud of the county officials um and the leaders for what they did there. So we wanted to recognize that. And there was some um present reluctantly for pictures of us that were up there. Um, but it was recognized that provided out. Um, I'm sure you all saw that in some of the uh NMC newsletters and such. So again, really great to see there. Um, we love the audit award. Um, and because again, anytime there's a third party, uh, we feel strongly that we're continually improving in those things that we're doing. But um I think it just speaks to, again, um, the fantastic work that Liliana and uh Lael are doing in their their areas and everything. So great kudos there. Um, I have a long list, so I'm gonna try to run through this as quick as we can. Um, the first thing to touch on, uh, so Mr. Nudson, myself, several others have been Um, the first thing to touch on, uh, so Mr. Nutson, myself, several others have been working on, um, over the past several months on some type of litter ordinance, as we had discussed in prior meetings. Uh, he should have, we feel like, a draft for y'all, um, at the March 8th meeting. So it's the standard thing, we bring y'all a draft, we ask for a notice of y'all's approval for the notice of publication, and then it will be publicized. And then we have several weeks to look at it, make tweaks. Um, we've looked at several other counties, several letter entities, legally, what can we do? What the framework looks like, um, what's working, what's not? So it's been a very detailed and ongoing process there. Um, so that is coming. Um, we do have, uh, we've been having regular meetings. I've been meeting with the city manager and different personnel, um, regularly as we really just try to work on defining our collaboration. We do have a scheduled meeting with the designee from the commission, as well as the designee from the city, uh, later this week. And so that will be our first formal meeting for everyone to be able to sit down and really try to outline the structure of what we're working toward. But those continue to go well, and we did have our second chat with the managers. Um, let's see, earlier this month, went well, had it on Facebook Live. That's something that the city takes care of, you know, that's beyond my capability. Um, but Sarah's really led the charge on that, and it's been really great. Uh, we have our next one scheduled in May, um, tentatively, and we're looking at what department we're gonna bring in. Uh, we really want to just continue to have those conversations, because there are some, um, questions that we dealt with, like in this last time, that it was just really great to provide that for them and have that ongoing conversation with the public. So those are moving along. Uh, we also have partnered with the city and the chamber. Um, we're having a hiring event on February 24th. Uh, that's gonna be at the YAM, and this, uh, was something that came together really fast with Eastern New Mexico University. Uh, and we have, last I'd heard, we had about 10, uh, businesses and entities that had signed up to do the recruiting, and now we're just working on getting, uh, the information out there so that we can get applicants. Um, as you know, we're constantly looking for applicants, um, for various positions within the county. Uh, specifically, right now, you know, we have an opening in the road department, uh, and we have openings at the detention center. And so just making sure that we can find some good applicants for those and that people here locally know about the awesome opportunities that we have throughout different entities. Um, okay, so we're moving forward, as you're aware, uh, with the Behavioral Health Feasibility Study. This was something that was initiated back in the fall of 2020. Again, United Way did a great job of really initiating this conversation, coming from one of their work groups and everything, and, uh, helped facilitate getting all of the counties and the cities together. So there's seven of us regionally, um, that budgeted for the feasibility study that's moving forward. Uh, we had our first site visit from the company that was contracted. And again, the city of Clovis is handling the procurement. Um, they're kind of the fiscal agent per se of all of this. So we're moving through with that. They do anticipate wrapping up the first round of the study in April. We did, um, submit requests for funding for the second phase. Um, the second phase, the first phase was just under 60,000. The second phase is about 190,000 if this continues to move through the study and collecting the data and the interviews and everything. So we will wait and see if there's any kind of funding sources that are allotted for that, or then we'll begin to look at some grant funding, um, as a result. So that continues to move forward. It is a huge need, as we're all aware of in our area. Um, again, the goal is to find that relief for the ERs in our hospital and the jails, uh, the detention centers that just become the de facto mental health, um, hospitals for these areas. So, um, Quay County, Curry County, Roosevelt County, and Dubacca County, all four of us have detention centers. We all four very much understand the pressures that are put on and the liabilities that we face because of this. Um, we have been very active, uh, and I've attended the Local Government Infrastructure Summit. That was the Friday we returned from Santa Fe. And then also a Department of Energy, um, webinar on the bipartisan infrastructure law. Um, it again is about 500 pages of delightfully fun reading of all of this funding that's coming from the federal level and what this could mean for our area. Um, very initial stages, they do not have anything clearly defined. They do not have anything outlined. It's just the initial discussions that we're having now. But we are following that one, um, very closely. And then, um, attended the New Mexico Pool Insurance Meeting in January, and I did share that data with y'all, that information's also shared with our safety committee, because they use that to set any kind of necessary programs that they need to do in that. And I've been providing regular, um, updates on the legislation. I will tell you, everything is moving very, very fast right now. Um, and that is something that we have to watch very carefully, as you know. Um, so it ends noon Thursday, and there is a lot of things moving right now. So in our legislative work, um, there is still not a live bill that we've seen drop for capital outlay that we've been able to have access to. So we don't know what that's gonna look like. There is the reauthorization bill that we have been able to locate. We do have the reauthorization of the funds. Um, it's about 37,000 from the detention center that we're gonna be able to utilize for HVAC renovations and such. So we are monitoring that. Uh, we do have several other bills related to capital expenditures. We are watching the general budget, the House bill too. Um, last, we've been told is that they do have the full $5 million restored for detention center funding to reimburse counties for our expenses of holding state prisoners. So that was one of our legislative priorities with New Mexico Counties. We're continuing to watch it closely. Um, the Senate did pass their memorial to study a unified jail system. Um, so that one has had action as well. Again, it's just memorial, a task force basically to start the conversation and to start the study of what this could look like. Um, we did have to flip gears and work really quickly. Um, and I know y'all saw the emails on this one, but with these omnibus packages that they're trying to put through right now, the omnibus crime bill and omnibus tax bill, there's a lot of moving parts, and they've taken a lot of these bills and combined them. And so one of the things that we were struggling with on the, uh, tax package was they wanted to reduce the state GRT by a quarter percent, which equivalent, like, is equivalent to about anywhere from $3 to $6 a month for the average family. So it's not a significant drop, but the state is saying, hey, it's the first time in 40 years we would drop it. So we don't want locals, uh, entities to be able to go and adopt any kind of taxing increase. And of course, we all had an outcry, because when you talk about local, we don't have all of the revenue sources that the state does. So we look at property taxes and gross receipts taxes. Um, so though it might not have had a direct impact, um, on any of the plans of the commission, we all, as counties, feel very strongly that you, as local governing officials, are elected to take care of local issues. And local government officials, those that are elected in this, understand and know the best needs, and you have a budget that you have to address. So we were really happy that they did listen to all of our calls, the testimony, the emails and such, like, hey, you know, don't, like, the local authority needs to be left to local authority. Um, nobody really ever wants to raise taxes, but it's something that the governing body has to decide when you're faced with what you're looking at in your budget. So again, we were very excited to get that amended out in the Senate and carried over. Um, everything that we're being told is that that will continue in the House bill. They have two bills moving very quickly through both. I'm sorry, I should probably talk slower and breathe, but I feel like I'm losing y'all, and it is so much information, I'm sorry. Um, those are the main highlights with the legislative, um, type stuff. And then everything else is pretty much, I think we've summed up. Uh, the one last thing that I'll end on, super positive, is that the grant that we discussed at the last meeting of going after for the administrative offices of the courts, um, for some specialized behavioral health training for our law enforcement and first responders and such. Uh, we did receive initial confirmation that we are gonna receive that funding. Um, so later this week, we have our first conference call set up with, uh, the Minister of Office of the Court to kind of see how that whole pilot project is gonna work. So again, very excited to see what we're able to do with that and implement here. So we'll keep you posted. There's nothing official yet, and of course, any kind of agreement or anything will be reviewed and presented for y'all's consideration. But just initially to know, uh, again, Carol, uh, came together as a special project coordinator, but then we actually had our MAP program administrator, Darla with DWI came over, because she had so much grant experience, and then our, um, court compliance monitor as well. So there was a group of us that put everything together and where it was exciting to see the teamwork take fruit here. So, okay, the end, I will stop, and I'm happy to try to answer any questions. Sorry for the long report.
You, you didn't mention anything about your interview about mental health.
That wasn't necessary.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. We, we did get good media coverage. Um, it was really great to see. We had an entity out of Fox News come down and do an interview while they were in town from Colorado. And then we, um, had some other local coverage. So yeah, it was really good. But we're just glad that everybody is sharing in it. And we do have an event, I think on February 25th, where we're inviting the community up to Clovis to really talk about the regional type stuff. So a lot of information's been on social media and in our regular media.
It's good to see that's mental health, you know, everybody understands.
It's a necessary conversation, yes.
See, the Commissioners have something they need to bring to the board?
Oh, we don't need to. Appreciate your moving along fast. I would like to make comment, you know, uh, last week or so ago, uh, Mr. Dixon couldn't go to the board director's meeting for the county. And, uh, she asked me to go, so I got to go and, uh, it was very informative to me, because I hadn't been even aware of, of, fairly aware that the thing existed, but when I got up there and I saw the other board members and their knowledge and their expertise, Mr. Cobbleman, Mr. Moore, President of the Association. Uh, there's a lot of work that's being done that, uh, citizens in our community and our county are not even aware of. And these people are very well-educated, very knowledgeable, and they're doing a lot of work in our behalf. And, um, I was really impressed with their ability. And, uh, along with that, I was impressed with the, uh, level of communication and interaction that they seem to have with our county manager. So I think that a lot of people don't realize a lot of the work that Amber does. It's not directly tied to her, this, this, uh, county, but her work affect, actually affects the whole state. And so I'd like to bring that to your attention and, uh, let y'all know I found out that Amber is not just a star here, she's a star there. And so, uh, thank you for that. That's all I had, that's all I had to say. And thank you, Mr. Dixon, for offering me that opportunity.
Mr. Dixon, do you have anything? You're good. Media? Anybody send anything over? Email or anything? Okay. Well, I'm on during this meeting. We're gonna take a little break.